And it will be Ms. Erin Dunn. She is running for District Two School Board.
Thank you, Jabari. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. So, hi, everybody. My name is Erin Dunn. I have been a public school teacher for 13 years. As an elementary music teacher in the schools, you know, I had the opportunity to work with every child and every family and every teacher within our schools. And so I can tell you that I know that public education works. Public education is important and needs to be there for all of our students. And so I stepped up to run for a number of reasons. But I'll tell you, one of those reasons is because we need to make sure that our teachers have the ability to teach, you know, real factual information in our classrooms. We need to make sure that our teachers are respected. We need to make sure that our administrators support our teachers in their attempts to build relationships with our families in our schools. And we need to try and find ways to support our teachers, not only through pay, but by treating them like professionals in our school settings. Another reason I stepped up is throughout my career, I have worked at three very different schools, schools at different socioeconomic levels. And I have found that there are definitely inequities that exist within our school system. I think there are a number of ways that we can address that. And I know that our school district is actually working on things like mentorship programs. And I'm in the process right now of meeting with different local groups to try and get those mentorship programs back into our schools post-COVID. Because we know that when kids, whether they're LGBTQ students who need affirming adults in their lives or any other child who has any other kind of struggle, they need adults in their lives and adults in the schools who they can connect with. We know that children who have faced trauma, if they have adults in our schools who they can relate to and who they can trust, they're more likely to show up to school. If we have programs in our schools that bring our children in, then they're more likely to succeed and ultimately graduate and then become productive members of society. The third reason I'm running is that we need to ensure that all of our families are represented in our schools, all of our students and all of our families. That includes making sure that books in our libraries include families that all of our children come from and include children that all of our students can relate to. We need to make sure that our curriculum is factual, that we're teaching real history in our classrooms. And we need to empower those who work in our schools to make sure that these things take place. And I will say lately, there have been some attacks on social media coming towards those of us who are running. But it is time to step up with factual information and say, I am running to represent my family, the families here, and all of the families in our schools, your children, your children, my child, and all the employees who work in our schools. We have to work together because if our teachers and all of our school staff members, everybody who works at the district, our families, you know, work together, our children succeed. So that's why I stepped up on behalf of all of our kids, because that is, that's our goal, right? That our children are successful. And post, you know, post-COVID, we have to come together on behalf of our kids. So that's why I stepped up.
Thank you, Erin. Next up is Ms. Kimberly Huff. She is also Vice President of Families for Safe Schools. And she's running for District Five School Board.
Hi, I'm Kim Huff. And I am running for School District, School Board, District Five. And as Jabari said, I am Vice President of Families for Safe Schools. And I really kind of catapulted into this place where I decided to run because of Families for Safe Schools. We started a battle to keep our children safe from COVID and by asking for our children to be masked during a pandemic. And realized quickly that there were going to be a lot of other issues that we had to face and stand up for and be sure that there was a counter voice to the people who were in the room that were yelling at School Board members. And so one of the biggest reasons I'm running is for my kids. I have a nine and 12-year-old in Brevard Public Schools. And I want to ensure that public education remains available to them. Currently, we know that our schools are, you know, they're under attack. There's really no way to say it nicely. They're under attack, and they're under attack because powerful people want to have them privatized. That's the ultimate goal. But additionally, they're under attack. Our teachers are under attack. Our School Board members are under attack. And our children are suffering. And so that is the biggest reason I'm running for School Board. Additionally, I love our teachers. I have worked in classrooms as a volunteer. I've helped students become better readers. And that's really like where I find the most joy is being in classrooms with kids and with my own kids. They, it's just so amazing to see, sorry, I've been talking a lot. It's so amazing to see all these diverse, different students together in a classroom and how accepting they are of each other. And so that's my favorite part. Kids are untainted by politics and the world. And so they mostly, you know, accept each other. And so I'm doing it for the teachers and the kids and obviously families. Families are important to me, Families for Safe Schools. And this is a family, really. Like, we talk to each other so much. I talk to them more than my family. And because we're fighting, you know, we are really fighting for the same goals. We want diversity. We want equality. We want equity. And we want a robust, strong school system. And right now, we can't fight for those things because we're too busy fighting just trying to preserve the institution of public education. And so it's really important for me to educate people about what's happening because some people, you know, before COVID, I didn't know many of the things I now know that I've educated myself on. So we need to educate people. We need to tell the truth. And we need to be sure that people get out and vote because without people going out to vote, we don't stand a chance to battle this. And so with that, I will hand it back to Jabari for our next candidate. I was going to say contestant.
All right. Up next, we have the current Chairwoman of the School Board. Yeah, that's like, you know, bringing up a contestant or something. Miss it, though. But she is representing District One. This will be her third term. Going for a third term. So much to say, but she has been great currently. And she's fighting, fighting, fighting. If you haven't watched School Board Meeting, yeah, you should know. You should watch and find out how much the Chairwoman is fighting. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Steve Felker.
Thank you all for the warm welcome. I'm running again because I clearly lost my mind. No, I, yeah. So I was elected the first time in 2014. I represent the north end of the county. So it's roughly 524 north to the Volusia County line. I say I represent. I'm elected from that area. Obviously, once I'm on the board, I represent the entire district. But I truly do spend the bulk of my time in the north end of the county because there's plenty in the north end of the county to keep me busy. But I do try to make sure that I'm getting throughout the district. I ran for the first time in 2014 primarily because I had been very active at the district level and at the school level and had made lots of really positive changes at my children's school. But there were decisions being made at the district level that were really negatively impacting my entire community. And I made a decision at that point in time that I could either pull my students from public education or I could step up and make a difference. And so in 2014, I threw my name in the hat, never had any political aspirations, never dreamt of being on the School Board, and I ended up winning. In a race where I was outspent three to one, where my opponent had supporters and a lot of people thought that I wasn't going to be able to be successful, but I was. And then I was successful again in 2018. And I'm going to be successful again in 2022, despite all of the bracket, right? I know I'm preaching to the choir when I say this, but our public schools are so critically important to our communities as a whole. And I hear from people all the time, I don't have kids in school, so none of that stuff matters. I'm here to tell you all, our public schools have always mattered, regardless of whether or not you have children in public schools because they impact our entire community. But this year, more than ever, our public schools and our School Board races matter because they are the forefront of the wars that are taking place to not only dismantle public education, but to drastically change the way that we live and the way that we experience life. And so what I will say to you all is, please, 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 I know you're engaged. Find 10 other people to get engaged as well because people need to understand the importance of this. The majority of our School Board races are going to be likely over in August. Mine will be over in August. Kim's will be over in August. Erin's, we're going to say, is going to be over in August. So realistically, mail-in ballots are going out in July, mid-July. We have, we have to have done all of the work to be successful in our campaigns by then because the majority of the races have been determined by the mail-in ballots over the past couple of years. So critically important to make sure that we are engaging, but we're also bringing other people alongside us and talking to them about the important issues. There's been so much noise around public education recently. And I'm here to tell you guys that phenomenal things are going on in our schools. And despite people saying that our kids are not what kids used to be, our kids are phenomenal and they're doing amazing things. And our teachers and our staff are working hard every single day to serve those students. But we can't do it alone. And we've got to calm down the noise so that we can focus on the things that are most important. And that starts with having representatives on your School Board that are going to prioritize students and faculty and staff and community. And so with that, I will get off my soapbox. And I think Erin and Kim, I think if you guys want to come back up, I think we're doing questions. Is that right, Jabari?
Yeah, that's right.
Kim, if you could just stay within the side.
There you go.
Questions?
Yeah, I'm going to ask real quick to the Chairwoman, since she's the incumbent. Can you think of a couple of things you've accomplished or things you want to finish doing in your next term?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the things that was really important to me when I got on the School Board was there were some glaring inequities between the north end of the county and other areas of the county. And that's not to say that there weren't inequities in other places, but it was just very obvious to me because of my community and where I lived. And so one of the things that I've been working on is making sure that we are providing opportunities to all of our students throughout the district that are going to help them be successful. I think one of the really critical areas that we've been heavily focusing on in the district and made good progress on, but we must continue to focus on, is career and technical education. For a lot of our students, if they are academically strong, they may not necessarily need or want career and technical education, although I would say it's good for all students. But for a lot of our students who struggle academically, career and technical education opportunities are the things that keep them in school, that help them to build relationships with their teachers because it's a different environment where it's much more hands-on. And it also provides them an opportunity to walk out of high school and have employable skills. And so I think that is an area that we must continue to focus on going forward and making sure that, right now, you know, Brevard's challenging because of the way we are laid out geographically. So we have to ensure that we are finding ways to make all of those programs accessible to all students.
Hi, can you all please talk about the role of parental rights in public education?
No, I am ready.
I was trying to share.
Absolutely. So the question was, in case you guys couldn't hear it, can you guys talk about the role of parental rights in education? I will say personally, as a parent, this past fall, I had a question about my fifth-grade son's language arts curriculum. Actually, a certain story that was not being included from what I had heard. So I went to the district website. I pulled up his curriculum. I found his exact chapter or, yeah, section that they were reading. And I pulled up exactly what he was working on at the time. So I think that there's a misconception that a lot of this stuff is not available to families, when in fact, much of what is being taught to our students is transparent. And if you just reach out to teachers and reach out to the district, pretty much all of the time, they will work with you and they will let you know what your students are doing in the classroom. And also, by getting involved in our schools and volunteering and making those connections with teachers, you can, you know, you can find out those kinds of things. And again, by working together, that's a better thing. As far as parental choice, I like to say parental involvement because one of my favorite things to do as a music teacher is to put on huge musicals with my students. So I would have approximately 100 fifth and sixth graders onstage, about 10 to 15 kids running all over backstage things, the sound and the lighting and moving scenery and things like that. And there's no way I could have put on those shows without massive amounts of parental involvement. I had parents feeding children and doing hair and helping with costumes, creating costumes, and just helping to organize teaching choreography and running lines. So there's absolutely no way I could have done my job and done these amazing things for our students in our public schools without huge amounts of parental support. So I understand the importance of that. I think that all good teachers do, right? And I think that all families who understand the importance of public education want to be involved. So I think that there's definitely a place for parental choice or parental involvement. There just has to be a line, right? Because we know that our teachers have degrees. Our teachers are the experts in the classrooms. And so we need to respect that. And they know the curriculum they're supposed to teach. They know the standards that they're expected to teach our students. So that I think there has to be a balance. But I think that we can definitely work together.
I agree with Erin. And I would say parental rights are something we all have. We had them before there was a bill that told us we had parental rights. We had the authority to choose how our children were educated. We have the authority to choose how our children received health care. The bill was part of all the things that are coming out of Tallahassee. They are to, they're used to scare people who didn't know or think they don't have these rights. And so I would say that parental responsibility is when you use your rights to make sure your children are educated in the best way possible, whether that's at home or at a public school or at a private school. And additionally, the same for their, for their health care. So I just feel that instead of talking about parental rights, which we all know what they are, we should be talking about the responsibility of parents to forge relationships with our teachers so that they can get the answers they need. I've never had a teacher tell me no to anything. So when you make, when you have a relationship with someone who's a major part of your child's life, you can work together to be sure that they're getting the best education possible.
So I mentioned when I decided to run in 2014 that I had done a lot of really good things at my children's school. And that's because in 2011, I became the PTO President at their school. I'm sorry, in 2010, I became the PTO President at their school. In 2011, we actually won the National PTO of the Year for the entire country because we were focused on getting parents engaged and involved in the education of their child. We weren't fundraising. We weren't, it was all about building a sense of community in our schools. And to this day, I believe that's critically important. As a parent, obviously, I believe that parents should have rights. And I think that goes for every parent, not just me or not just you. We all have rights in the upbringing of our children. But I think we also have to understand that at some times, we have to make decisions for the whole. And sometimes those decisions are really difficult. I'll give you an example. As parents, we have a right to opt out of vaccinating our children through a religious exemption. However, if your child comes in to Brevard Public Schools and they're not vaccinated for chicken pox and we have an outbreak of chicken pox in the school, your child's not going to be able to come to school for however many days that we have this outbreak situation going on. And I think we see that often where we have to take responsibility for the choices that we make. And it doesn't mean that we don't have choice. We still have choice. But there are consequences to those choices sometimes. And I think the goal for every school, every teacher, every principal, is to have parents in their school and engaged and interacting and supporting the education of their children. Critically important. We have been huge in Brevard Public Schools about providing choice options for families, whether it is you, I, the other day, I got a call from someone who was very upset about the IB program. Well, we have parents who love the IB program. And so it's maybe not right for every child, but for the children in IB, it is right for them. So I think you have seen a thread in Brevard Public Schools that we do our best to provide options that fit the needs of every family. But we might not always be able to fit all of the needs of every family when we have to make difficult decisions. But absolutely, all parents have rights and should be able to exercise those rights in the upbringing of their kids.
Just had a question. We keep hearing these requests for audits of EPS. So given your tenure so far, I'm curious, have we already cut enough? Are we not, is there more to cut? What have you done in your terms to reduce the cost to try and balance out the teacher salary and the facility?
Yeah, so we've cut over $38 million from the budget. For those of you who are not familiar, we are funded partially by our local property taxes. The state, there are three different items on the property taxes that you pay. One is for our capital. That is held steady at 1.5. One is discretionary at 0.0748 or something like that. And then the last one is the required local effort millage. That's the one that the state sets. And since 2012, they've actually been rolling that amount back. So in 2012, the required local effort was set at 5.4. This year, the required local effort is set at 3.6. And the reason that they've been doing that is because as our property values have been increasing, the state didn't want taxpayers to pay more money in taxes. So what they've been doing is actually decreasing the millage rate that you're paying. So schools are not realizing the increase in property values that everyone else is, like your county taxes. So as a result of that, we've had to cut about $38, $39 million in the past few years from our budget. And I will tell you, we are currently at a point where we can, we cannot cut ourselves out of the mess that we're in. There's not enough money to be cut in the budget to fix the financial crisis that we're in with regard to compression for pay for our employees, with regard to increasing expenses, just like you all are seeing increased expenses on your utilities and your groceries and all of those things. We are also seeing that in the district. And so that's why you've heard that the board is going out to the community to request the community's input on a millage so that we can begin to address some of those things. Specifically, to Scott's point about audit, I invite all of you to go to the district websites and look at our audit information because I don't know that there's a private company that is audited near as much as the district is. In fact, next week, I'm meeting with the Auditor General for their entrance meeting to come in and audit us. They do that, I believe, every three years. We have internal auditors that audit all sorts of different things within the district and report out to us, including expenditures on the sales tax dollars. They review processes to make sure that we don't have, you know, vehicles disappearing and computers disappearing and all of those things. We have a very thorough and very in-depth audit process. And I welcome anyone to go and take a look at those audit reports at any point in time. Go to brevardschools.org, go to the search and put in audit, and it's all right there for you. Sorry, Kim. In addition, we have an audit committee that is made up of community members that meets on a regular basis and holds our feet to the fire on anything that comes up in the internal audits that we may need to address. So I would suggest that the requests for audits are duplicative at best.
Are we going to see attrition with our good teachers because we've been too worried about audits and Randy Fine trying to cut the budget and things when we have cost of living going up? I mean, the cost of living has been skyrocketing, you know, home insurance, and yet our teacher salaries aren't going up accordingly. Are we going to, you know, lose a lot of our good teachers through this process, just for anybody?
Do you guys want to answer first, or you want me?
Well, I mean, I'll.
It's okay.
So we, we are already in the negative, really, for teachers. I mean, we need, we need people to be working as teachers in our public schools desperately. And based on my conversations with many teachers that I've asked to, like, join a group with me so that I could, they could feel safe in being honest about what's happening in the schools. It's a, it's not the, surprisingly, it's not the end-all, be-all for them leaving, but it's, you know, a big reason why teachers are leaving. They don't feel respected because they're not being paid in a way that treats them like professionals. And so add that to not feeling respected by some families, maybe the community at large because we constantly are talking about things that, I mean, they're not true, happening in our schools. So yes, we are, we're going to see, we are going to lose teachers. We're going to lose more teachers. And this just puts more pressure on our teachers who stay because they have to make up all the, you know, where do we put kids? The classrooms sizes get too big. They're sharing, they're sharing classes with each other. They lose their planning time, which is crucial to, like, I don't know, sanity even. I mean, you, they don't have any other time. They're constantly with students because we don't have enough teachers. And so, yes, not having enough money in the budget is absolutely making teachers leave.
I'll just add in something quickly. So before I decided to run back in January, I met with Dr. Mullins, who's our school superintendent. And one of the questions I asked him, is there a place for local School Board members to advocate at the state level? Because I was looking at our budget and looking at the decrease in funding in education. And know that, you know, you might hear from Tallahassee that the funding for education is increasing, but our teacher pay and many other things are still far behind where they used to be 10, 15 years ago. And so I believe and I promise that as a School Board member, I think there is definitely a place for our local School Board members throughout the state to work together, to talk to Tallahassee and say, enough is enough. We need more statewide education funding for all of our students and all of our schools. And so I think that our local officials need to step up and make that obvious and step up on behalf of our kids because the amount of funding for education in the state of Florida is not acceptable for our students.
So yes, we are going to lose teachers because of the funding issue. And it really is getting more and more complicated. And I know many of you have probably heard this before, but a couple of really critical things happened during this legislative session that are really impacting our ability to address those issues at the local level. So our, our state gave us funds to increase the minimum teacher salary because they want our minimum teacher salary our minimum teacher salary to be top in the United States. We're very appreciative of those dollars. Anytime we can put dollars toward teachers, we're thankful to be able to do that. However, what they haven't done is adequately fund our ability to address those teachers who are making just over the minimum teacher salary. So, this year, our minimum teacher salary is forecast to go to 47.5. The challenge is that we have teachers who have been in the district 12 years that are literally making 47.8. And so, as those minimum teacher salaries are increased, we've got to find some way to also bump up the people that have been with the district for some time, which is a real challenge. The other thing, and to Erin's point about working with our state, and we do, we have a very active school board association that works with our legislature on a regular basis, and I could spend hours talking about that whole process. But, our state has determined that for every dollar we give a veteran teacher, once we hit the 47.5, we must give 75 cents to a minimum salary teacher. I don't know how many of you are into math, but I can tell you, it just doesn't work for us to be able to close those gaps with that formula. The other thing that we have is Paid for Performance was passed many years ago. And so, for every dollar we give to a highly effective, I'm sorry, for every dollar we give to a PSC teacher, which is a professional contract teacher, we must give at least 75 cents to an annual contract teacher. So, there are lots of intricacies in the statute that are really making it difficult for us to address that issue. And then, the last thing that I'll say, because I know we have some more questions, is it's not only a teacher issue. We are going to run into issues with having enough bus drivers, enough food service workers, enough, you name it, every position in the district. Because the other thing that the state did this year was they told us that by October, we must have all of our employees raised to a minimum of $15 per hour. Despite the fact that the voters voted to do that over a series of years, the state has said by October, we must have everyone at $15 per hour, or in January, they can start suing us. So, once again, I have employees in the district that are supervisors, making 15.25 an hour, and their employee who starts tomorrow is going to make $15 an hour. And we don't have the additional funding to address all of those people above that amount. And when I say we don't have that additional funding, it's because the state oftentimes tells us how we must spend the dollars that come to us. So, they said, here's a pot of money that you must raise to the minimum teacher salary. Here's a pot of money that you must raise to $15 per hour. Oh, and by the way, costs for retirement are increasing, so go ahead and give me another four, five, six million dollars out of the funds that we've given you to cover the increase in retirement that you must give to the Florida retirement system. And you must do this, and this, and this, and this. So, if you look at our budget, the $48 million in new dollars that came to BAVARD Public Schools this year, at the end of the day, when we have addressed all of those requirements from the state, we're left with about 3.6 million new dollars to address all of the employees that are making beyond $15 per hour and all of the employees that are making beyond 47.5. And yes, those people can leave and get jobs making more money in private industry, especially because we're seeing so much boom in the space industry here and so many high-paying jobs. It just doesn't make sense for them to continue to serve in education. And the very last thing I'm going to say on this is it's not just pay. I think you probably have heard about disciplinary issues in schools as well, and that's an issue that we have to come together with as a community because it's not that our teachers are doing anything wrong, it's not that our principals and assistant principals are doing anything wrong, it's that oftentimes, we do not have the support to address those disciplinary issues, either from families, or we have a whole lot of children that have experienced trauma and really, really need to have those strong adult relationships that were mentioned earlier. So, our community getting into our schools, mentoring those kids, working with the kids that are having behavioral issues would make a huge difference as well for our teachers.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
So, I just wanted to go back to what you guys talked about, parent rights and stuff. I don't know if this is a question or a comment, but it seems like the school board meeting, we spent so much time arguing about things that simply aren't true, like arguing about, oh, we need a process now we can review books. Well, there's already a process, so why are we constantly having these arguments? And I guess, my sort of question is, how do we sit there and as a group, fight for fixing things in our school when we spend so much of our time explaining things to people that already exists? Like, you already have parents' rights to know what your students need taught. Why are we spending time talking about making a bill for something that's already there?
So, great question. And I can't disagree with you. I think if you have watched the past few school board meetings, we have collectively tried to do a little bit better job of addressing inaccuracies that are being shared, just to correct where it's just blatant misinformation. And it's a fine line because we don't want to get into an argument from the dais with the audience and all of those things, right? But there are some things, like, you know, we talk about the book review. We have a policy in place for book review at each individual school, and the state requires that we allow any community member to bring forward a concern about books in our schools. So, that process was already in place, but what we're facing now is 41 books that they have requested to be reviewed. And yes, I could require that every school that has any one of those books convene a review committee, and they go through the entire process of reviewing that book and making a decision for that school. But if I'm being brutally honest, my team is tapped. They are, they, they just cannot do any more than they're currently doing. And so, for me to have a book review committee at every single school, it's going to poll my principal, my assistant principal, my media assistant, my, you know, numerous staff members plus parents at those schools for a lot of time investment, and we're going to have each of those schools running concurrent reviews at the same time. So, we have modified the policy to allow, when there's a situation where we have books at multiple schools, for it to be done at the district level so that we can convene one committee instead of 15 different committees. And I know there are some people that disagree and think that that's making things easier for the people who are contesting these books, but at some point, I have to make a choice about most effectively utilizing the resources of the district. And I don't think that you will see a difference in outcome based on the fact that they're being reviewed at the district. I think I'm just going to save some sanity and maybe keep from staff, some staff members from walking out because they've already had enough. So, some of that, yes, we do need to listen and we need to respond and we need to make changes. And then, some of it, we just need to do a better job of educating people about, here's how you find the resources that you're looking for if you want them. And we're trying to do a better job of that.
A parent can already make a book not available to their child though, too, can't they?
Correct. Any parent has, yes, any parent has the opportunity to contact the media specialist at their child's school and request that certain books not be available for their child to check out.
Rental involvement is the rights that they are.
Read it at school, but not at home. I mean, he says not to check out. Their kid goes and forgets about the shelf, and I'll say, hey, I'm checking this out. And they just sat there and read it.
There's usually not a ton of time for them to actually read while they're in the media center. So, usually, they're going over curriculum and those sorts of things, and then they check their books out and take them with them. So, yes, they could read for a small amount of time, but they're not going to be able to read it for very long, I wouldn't think.
Are parents allowed to tell their kids at home, I don't want you to read this book?
The question was, are parents, the question was, are parents allowed to tell their children they cannot read a book and absolutely?
Parents have rights at home, too.
Again, I don't know if this is a question or a comment, but it strikes me that it's appropriate for the district to be making this decision because otherwise, you're going to have things available and some schools are not available in other schools, and you're creating an equity situation. So, I think that makes perfect sense to have it done at the district level and have a very clear policy everywhere that everyone adheres to.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, too. We have some very specific statutory things that we have to review about the books. So, we're not, you know, the determination on whether or not a book is going to continue to be available in the school isn't based on, well, it makes someone uncomfortable or we don't like that subject matter or whatever. There's some very clear statutory requirements for our response on that. You have been incredibly patient.
So, I wanted to talk about our, get your view on the achievement gap. What, if you guys are elected again, what are you going to do with some closer achievement?
Do you guys want to? I feel like I'm commandeering the microphone.
Well, we have an expert, so we should use her. So, this is something that I have been working on since before I decided to run for school board. Actually, Jabari and I have, and other people from Families for Safe Schools have had conversations with the district about the achievement gap issues and how can we fix them. I feel a little bit like I'm running on a hamster wheel at times because our data tells us what the problems are, or specifically, what outcome we are not getting. And so, now the question is, how do we get the outcome that we want? What is the problem? Jabari and I are big advocates for an equity audit because we need someone to do more than just collect the data that we know it's been the same data for decades. We need to find out why. We need to find out, how do we fix it? We need to find out, how do we correct it? There is one school in the county that is a community school, Endeavor. And it's an amazing example of how they have brought resources to the school, to the families, to the people who need it, such as dental care, health services, counseling programs, parenting programs. And they've seen in a very short period of time, four years, they've seen their students begin to succeed in a way that they were not succeeding before. So, there's one little glimpse at how we can possibly fix those problems, but we don't have a problem in one area of town. We don't have a problem in one socioeconomic situation. We have a problem across the whole district, including our charters and choice schools. So, that speaks to me as a cultural problem, a problem we have in the culture of our schools, and I think it's something we need to address. And the scariest part is, the people who are against books being available to children and masks, they also are against anything that addresses diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so, we need to protect that as well because this is all part of this whole working process that we need to, we need to figure out, you know, yesterday, quite honestly, how do we fix this? How do we, how are we sure that all of our students are successful? They're all reading at grade level, they're all performing at math at grade level. And then, COVID. So, we have kids, and I'll say my own kids, have slipped in their testing scores, which I also, that's a whole nother conversation. But, our kids have also slipped behind from the last two years of just no consistency in their education. My kids had e-learning, in-school learning, virtual learning, back-to-in-school learning. Like, it's, you can't expect them to just jump back in and, you know, know all the things that they haven't been taught. So, my position is that I would like to see us dig deeper so that we can find solutions because right now, we just have ideas and we're not getting anything done. So, I want to see, like, action.
So, I would say that something we really need to address is the relationship between student achievement and poverty. And I think, like I said initially, I've worked at three very different schools, three differently diverse schools, three schools that are very different as far as the socioeconomic status of the surrounding neighborhoods and the students who attend those schools. And so, I think the first thing is we need to train the adults who work in those schools to understand the framework of poverty and understand that families whose children go to those schools, it's not that they don't want to be involved in their children's education, but when they're trying to survive and when they're, you know, working on so many, so many things in order to just get their children to school and clean clothes and make sure that their kids are as successful as possible, I think we have to make sure the adults in the schools are also reaching out to those families, know that just because they don't show up during the school day to volunteer like they might at other schools, doesn't mean that they don't care very much about their own children. And I believe, just like Kim talked about Endeavor Elementary, I think one of the ways that we do that is that we expand that community-school model throughout our district. You know, Endeavor is talked about a lot because it was a school that was challenged in a lot of ways, but we have many other schools throughout our district that have similar issues. I'm actually going to Endeavor, I think this Friday, with Dan to actually meet and learn more about their, the program that they have there because, as Kim said, it's working and certain aspects of it are, they're absolutely increasing student achievement. And I think also, Endeavor is in my district, and up in Cocoa, we have organizations like Family Promise and so many other community organizations. I think there's Families for Safe Schools. I think there's also something to be said for all of these organizations that are working parallel to each other to see how, right now is the perfect time for us to come together and see what we can do to support those schools. Because, again, if the parents in those neighborhoods are not able to step up during the school day for different reasons, who else can we bring in to help support those kids? Because they deserve every chance of success like every other child in every other school in our district.
So, one of the things that we've done in the district, hold on. Yeah, hold on, hold on, okay. One of the things that we've done is to identify what we call priority schools in the district. And, you know, we've been talking equity issues for many, many years in BAVARD Public Schools. And a lot of different things have been tried to address that. If I go back to Endeavor for a minute, one of the things that really helped to turn Endeavor around, to turn Endeavor around, was an influx of resources. And so, there are funding resources that have allowed us to provide the dental care and some additional supports for the students as well. There's been an enormous amount of community support. Two, I guess it's been three years ago now, maybe, before COVID, each of the board members actually volunteered to go in and spend two days a week at Endeavor, working with individual students to help to close some of those gaps. And we have community members that go in and do the same thing. What we have seen with the priority school model is we are now wrapping the entire resources of the district around those schools. So, the schools where we know we have struggling students or a large portion of struggling students, they have become a priority for everyone in the district. So, if they have an issue that is facilities-related, if it is an issue that is student services-related, they know at the district level that when we get a call about those schools, they take priority over the other schools that might have more resources readily available to them. But what I will tell you all is, we absolutely need to continue to focus on our priority schools, and we need to get our community members into our schools, going back to relationships and helping students to see possibility beyond the poverty cycle and all of those things through mentoring. But oftentimes, we assume that because a student is at a school like, I'll say, Vera Elementary, that all students there don't have needs. And so, where we get into really delicate balances, we have got to make sure that regardless of where that student is, what school that student is at, that they're getting the supports that they need to be successful. And oftentimes, we have a perception that not all of our schools need support. And the truth of the matter is that they do. Our staff does a phenomenal job in trying to build those relationships and reach out to our families and do whatever we can to support students. We've put in a lot of social workers in our schools to try to provide additional supports for families, but we have a lot of open positions that we can't hire. And so, at some point, if we as a community are going to decide the public schools are really important to us, then individuals who have the ability to build those relationships with students and help them to see the possibilities really have to get engaged in the schools. And so, I think that's something that you'll see as a priority going forward. I will announce unofficially that it looks like we've just gotten a grant to actually open a health clinic at Endeavor. Endeavor is an interesting model because there are multiple people who have come together to make that possible. So, yeah. So, we definitely are going to keep working on the whole equity issue, though.
Okay, so, it's going to take the, a village, it's going to take an army to get you guys elected. Tell everybody here what we can do to help and how to make that happen, please.
So, one of the biggest ways I think we need help is we need, we need like an army of people, right? And so, over the last month or so, we've had a couple of events that we've attended as Families for Safe Schools. Yesterday was the Women's March, and, and then we also had our, our Say Gay Rally. And so, when I, when I see how we can, like, mobilize people in that way to help, to show support, I mean, it, it made me feel so much part of the community, like, we do have a lot of people on our side. And so, we need people to get out and work for us, really, like, go door-to-door with our materials. Because for me, it's important that I reach every voter who's going to vote for me. It may be a few extras that are on the fence or don't know I even exist. So, it's really important for me to get in front of groups. So, if you live in my area, which is West Melbourne, and like the northwest Palm Bay area, which is my district, I would love to get in front of a community because I feel like that's where I can do these things, where we can talk and we can have questions and conversation, and people will know where I stand on whatever issue it is that concerns them. So, that is one of the most important things. The second most important thing is we need money so that we can print those materials, we can send those materials, we can buy the fancy signs that are going to be out in the yard. Because name recognition is like part of the game, and it's just a fact.
That's why I give that to you guys.
We all have various ways. So, through our websites, you can donate. We both have ActBlue, so it's a pretty relatively easy process. And I think Misty has an additional way.
Yeah, so I have decided that I just cannot handle all of the social media stuff and still be out there doing what I need to be doing. So, I really am encouraging everyone to go to my website, mistybelford.com. You can donate through PayPal there. It has an address if you'd like to mail checks. You can sign up to be a volunteer there. So, when we're scheduling, going out and knocking on doors, I'll have you on a list. I'll let you know if it works with your schedule. You're certainly welcome to join me regardless of where you are in the county, keeping in mind that we're up on the North End. So, I know it's not going to be convenient for everyone, but absolutely, everything can be done through the website there. And my, my phone number is on there as well, and I have some cards over there that have my website and my phone number and my email, so.
My website is H O U G H, then number four, schools.com. I also have some literature over there that has a QR code that'll take you right to my webpage.
So, my website is erindunforschools.com, E R I N D U N E, the number four, schools.com. And I will piggyback on what Misty and Kim said. We absolutely need an army of people to come out with us. In my particular case, I have three opponents in my district. In my particular case, I have three opponents in my district who are similarly minded. And so I really need some supportive people, probably many of whom are at this event today or listening online, who can come to events with me at my table and can speak to people walking by about the reality of what is happening in our schools and the reality of what we're fighting for. So that is something that I would absolutely love to have. In addition to knocking doors, if it's hot for you during the day and you're, you're not a walker, sometimes we need people to drive, too. So if someone's knocking doors and you can drive people around, that's fantastic and I would love to have some support at events. And I have some buttons and things on the table that have my website on them as well. Oh, we have yard, yard signs. Fantastic. So I have some yard signs here today if anybody wants to pick one up. Yeah, and some t-shirts actually, too. We just got our yard signs in, so I'm pretty excited about that.
Thank you, Erin, Kim, and Misty. And if you saw the last school board meeting, there is no favoritism. Misty shut me down twice.
Yeah, you got to shut that one off.
Had to throw that in there for you. All right, so up next, we have a House Representative, a Families for Safe Schools alumni, also very active father. And he is running for state rep, District Thirty-Three.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Right.